Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Richfield Planning Commission, of the regular meeting of April 24th, to order. First we'll do attendance?
Attendance noted.
Excellent. And then approval of the minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting of March 27th, 2017.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. And then next, this is an opportunity for citizens to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda. So we have two items that are public hearings, but if there's anything that anybody would like to speak to us about that isn't on the agenda, now's the time to come up. Alright, seeing no one, we'll move forward. Our first public hearing is a public hearing to consider request for a conditional use permit and variances to allow a buffet restaurant to operate in the former Old Country Buffet space at 6601 Nicollet Avenue. Staff?
Thank you. After operating a restaurant at 6601 Nicollet Avenue for several decades, Old Country Buffet closed for business in February of 2016, and that space has remained vacant ever since. Earlier this year, a new buffet restaurant, Lakes Buffet, approached the city about occupying this space. Because the space has been vacant for a little more than one year, all prior approvals for a restaurant have now expired. Traditional or cafeteria-style restaurants are a conditional use in the C2, General Business zoning district. In order to operate a restaurant in this location, the applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit, as well as a variance from the city's odor control regulations. The zoning code establishes requirements for odor control equipment for commercial kitchens that abut residential property, and it also, and the code also differentiates between new and pre-existing restaurant sites. Because the space has been vacant for more than one year, the zoning code actually views this as a new restaurant site rather than a pre-existing restaurant site, despite the Old Country Buffet having been there for several decades. New restaurant sites must install odor control equipment, whereas pre-existing sites are instead required to provide plans for a professionally-designed odor control remedy. For those pre-existing sites, complaints of odor impacts may result in requiring that the planned odor control device be installed. The applicant is requesting a variance to be considered as a pre-existing site rather than a new restaurant site. But by requiring the professionally-drawn and engineered plans now, that assures both the city and the applicant that the building could accommodate that odor control equipment, should it be necessary in the future. The applicant is also requesting a variance to reduce the off-street parking requirement. Approximately 13 parking stalls will be lost due to the construction of a roundabout at the corner of 66th Street and Nicollet Avenue, next year. This pending modification to the parking lot is a very unique circumstance that is not created by the applicant themselves, and it affects the property as a whole rather than this particular restaurant tenant. A preliminary plan to reconfigure the parking lot near the roundabout, near the future roundabout there, is attached to the report. A revised site plan, meeting all city requirements, is required to be submitted by the applicant for approval by city staff within one year, and that site plan must include a pedestrian route to the public sidewalk, as well as bicycle parking for a minimum of six bikes. Finding that the proposal meets zoning code requirements, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit and variances. We did receive one email correspondence related to this application, which I've placed in front of you, and then I've also included a copy in the, in the public copy that was available in the lobby. If you didn't have a chance to, I think we emailed it to you earlier today, but if you haven't had a chance to read it yet, we'll just give the Planning Commission a quick minute to review that letter. Alright, it looks like everyone's just about ready. The, it looks like the applicant is here, if there are any questions, and staff will stand for any questions as well. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for staff before we open the public hearing?
I am just curious about, from the written commentary, I am curious what the standard is or what the process is for how you would determine that you need to require them to do it after the fact.
Sure, so that's a, that's a good question. So like, the, so the ordinance states that they, they have to prepare the, they have to submit those plans for the professionally-drawn and engineered, basically to, to confirm that the building can support the equipment. We actually make them go as far as picking out an odor control model and everything, which, which the applicant has done. In, as far as the, the code requirement, that, that, or what the code says, as far as the applicant may be required to install the equipment in the future, it doesn't set out a specific complaint process. But in speaking with the city attorney, what we think, you know, I think at a minimum, we would look for a minimum of two complaints from at least two different residents. We would, we would not accept anonymous complaints. You know, we would require that there be an address attached to it so we can verify that the person does in fact live near, adjacent to or near the restaurant, and probably look for a minimum of two unique, two unique complaints within a set timeframe. But the ordinance does not get any more detailed than that. And then there would certainly be in a, if, if there were complaints, the community, the Community Development Director would make that determination to require the equipment. And if, if the, whether it was this restaurant or another one anywhere else in the city, they would have the ability to appeal that determination to the city council.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Alright, seeing none, this is a public hearing, so if anybody would like to come up and speak or ask questions, you're welcome to do so now. You can just come right up to the podium, sign in, give us your name and address, and usually we give about three minutes, and I'll give you a warning when you hit your three-minute mark. Yep, head right up.
Speaking for Ivan Chen?
I have a question. Is that a buffet? Is that Chinese buffet or what kind of buffet?
Do we know what kind of buffet it is?
Yes, so as far as we understand, it would be a Chinese buffet.
Because in this area, it's a three restaurant, Asian restaurant, and a Chinese restaurant already. I'm not happy like that in doing the buffet. Because if they open it, another one, it can be hurt my business too. And before, it had that Easter buffet, fast street. And when I take over, and later one year, they close down. And we don't want to make it open again, same.
Yep, so the city, we, we can only, we can only determine what land uses go in particular areas, whether that be restaurants, retail, services, that type of thing. We can't actually, the city has no control over the type of food being served. That is kind of left to the private sector, or the, I guess, the free market to determine how many of a certain type of restaurant that the, that the market can support. We can't really, we can't really exert any control over the type of food being served.
Is there any other questions or, okay. Thank you, thank you for coming. Yes, you're, is there anybody else who would like to come up and speak? Ask questions? No one? Come on up. Hi, just state your name and address and sign in.
My name is Nikki Boderthe, and I live at 6633 First Avenue South. And I am also, I'm a little concerned about the fact that there is not a really set kind of way that we could have the odor issue addressed, should it need to be addressed in the future. I live quite close, and I can already smell some of the other restaurants in the neighborhood that are, have been there a little bit longer. And I'm just concerned this will be a little bit more odorous than what we kind of would have expected. So I hope that that can be a little bit more clarified for the residents that live in that neighborhood, so that if we do feel that it needs to be addressed, it's an easy process, and we understand what we need to do to make that happen.
Thank you.
And I can speak to that a little bit. As far as submitting a complaint, that would be a relatively easy process, as simple as contacting city staff directly, submitting a report through the website. There, there's, on the city's website, there's a section called "I Want To", and then you can file a complaint or report or anything like that, or call Community Development staff directly. So there's not, it's not a prolonged or complicated process to submit or to file a complaint about odors.
But to have them take action?
Like I said, you know, this, since this odor control ordinance went into effect in 2015, this hasn't actually, we haven't actually had a complaint situation arise yet. But yeah, in discussing it with the city attorney, we think that at a minimum, two unique complaints from neighbors who provided their addresses, so that we could confirm that they do in fact live, live near it. I think that would be the minimum that we would consider, you know, taking action.
Thank you.
And then just, just to add to that, I do want everyone to understand that this is a conditional use permit, and that this is one of the conditions of that permit. And so if the restaurant would violate this, and we received complaints, and we told them the director and staff had determined that an odor control system needs to be installed, they'd be given a reasonable amount of time to do that. But if they did not, they would be in violation of this permit, and it could be revoked.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody else? Alright, is there a motion to close the public hearing then?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Alright, motion carries. Alright, discussion. Anybody wanna have any discussion or motion we can discuss?
I have one other just quick question about smells. Is there any objective way to measure smells, like there is decibel for sound? Okay, so it's just like you go out and sniff it and see if it?
Yes, essentially. There, there are measures of, it's molecules per something or another. It's, it's above my pay grade to understand. But the, the odor control, the mechanical engineers who design the systems, there isn't, there isn't really a good way for us to do that. So they have tried, but there is not really a quantifiable way to do this.
Okay, thank you.
Just to make one final clarification about it. So that the odor control ordinance, it also notes that what necessitates having odor control equipment, odor mitigation equipment, is a Type 1 ventilation hood, as required, and that's required through the building code, depending on the type of cooking equipment that you have. Something like a coffee shop with light baking and things like that is not likely to have that equipment or require odor control. Anything that's, you know, cooking or grilling meat, any type of deep frying typically requires that. In this case, the restaurant that's going in is having the exact same type of cooking equipment that Old Country Buffet had for many years. They were required to have a Type 1 hood, this new restaurant will as well. But they're not intensifying or altering, basically, the intensity of what Old Country Buffet previously had at this location without any odor control equipment.
Alright.
Yeah, I just would like to know, what is the, what was the thought process and the rationale for changing them from a new restaurant, as the code stipulates, to a pre-existing? What was the, why the change?
So like we said, the, the, the site sat vacant for just over one year. Had they come in, had they opened in February of this year or earlier, they actually wouldn't even be here tonight. They would have gone in, the, the previous permit would still be valid, and any restaurant basically could have moved right in. Staff, in, in supporting this variance request, basically thought that, since it was so close to one year at the time of application, or basically, at this time, we're about three months past that now, that it, that a variance was justifiable.
Well then, why have a code? I mean, if you, I mean, to me, that says that, I mean, we wouldn't even be here talking about this. If we, if they had a year, we had your year, and then I don't care how close, then why even bother? I mean, it's just, to me, that doesn't, that's not, to me, that's not a rationale for doing it. I mean, a year is a year is a year. And then they should be under the same rules as a new restaurant, to my way of thinking. And they need to have the odor control equipment there. And as I've said many times before, we are here to protect the neighborhoods. As much as we need businesses, and I applaud getting new businesses in here, we are here to protect the neighborhoods. We were appointed to represent the neighbors. And I just have a real tough time with this, to give them that little bit of leeway, because they're so close to the year. The year is a, is a year. And I can't support this, because I believe they should be under the regulations of, to have the odor control equipment and not be allowed to have the variance.
Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit and the variance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, discussion. Anybody have any discussion?
I mean, I, I wasn't sure exactly how to feel about this, and I don't know a whole lot about this, this issue, but I do feel compelled by the fact that if this was two months ago, it would have been okay. I worry about the impact to the neighbors, but the fact that the standard is only two complaints to resolve it, if it becomes an issue, it has decades of precedent as being a restaurant. I mean, I, I'm sympathetic, and I don't like us being wishy-washy about this, but it does seem like an unusual situation, and it's making use of this vacant space that I think the neighborhood would benefit from having occupied, so that's why I'm supporting it.
Go ahead.
I guess if I could just counter that to some degree, you know, if it's only two complaints is the threshold, it seems like we've already had two people speak up to some degree about this, and I'm just wondering, at what point is that just gonna immediately trigger after we approve it anyway? So I, I just, a little more food for thought for that. But I'm, you know, I'm on your side as far as wanting something in that space right away, and it seems like it's a, you know, it's a logical fit for the space, and I think that's why, you know, I'd be inclined to approve the variance. But you know, I do wonder, you know, is that two complaints, is that just gonna happen immediately after we approve it anyway?
I have to say, I'm a little torn too, because are we, like you said, presetting them up already? And the reason that, this is really expensive, correct? Like, that's, it's a really expensive system. My concern is we approve it in two months now, they have to come back and put it in, and we've put them out of business because of this, right? And if we didn't give them the fair due diligence of addressing the complaints, that if it's only two complaints, we're just going to lead them down a path that's gonna get rejected eventually.
Actually, if I could call out, I think the applicant is likely embarking on this, knowing there's a chance. And if the choice is not being able to open, because you have a couple hundred thousand dollars in additional opening expense for odor control, my guess is the applicant's taking the gamble that they can successfully not have excessive smell for the neighborhood, knowing that if they do, they may have an issue. But never being able to open is a whole lot different than being able to weigh the economic impacts, once you are open, of making an additional capital investment.
I agree. It is very nice to know that we've been really clear about, here's what's gonna happen, outlining some of those guidelines, that it is two complaints, written complaints of neighbors, and knowing that going into it. Anybody else have any discussion thoughts? Okay, then I'll ask for a vote. We do have a motion to approve as written, which is both for odor and parking. Anybody have any comments about parking? I have no concerns at the site, so. Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you, thank you for coming, thank you for speaking. We will move on to our second agenda item, which is to consider the attached resolution related to approval of a multi-tenant commercial development at 66th Street East, between 16th and 17th Avenues. The proposal would replace four existing single-family homes and eliminate approximately 120 feet of 17th Avenue, in front of 6608 and 6614 17th Avenue. This area is currently zoned for commercial development. Staff?
Thank you. So the properties at the corner of 66th Street and 16th and 17th Avenues have been zoned and guided for commercial use since 1968. At work sessions in February and April of 2016, and again in January of this year, Interstate Development, the developer, presented concept plans to the city council, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and the Planning Commission for a multi-tenant commercial building on these properties. Based on feedback received at those meetings, the developer has submitted a plan that includes an attractive building with access and interest along 66th Street, Richfield Parkway, and the adjacent Three Rivers Regional Trail. Although no tenants have been announced, the developer has indicated that a coffee tenant would occupy the westernmost space with the drive-through, and that negotiations are underway with a smaller restaurant chain that is not currently operating in or near Richfield, or the easternmost space with patio seating. The proposed plans are consistent with the zoning code. There are just two areas where they deviate. The first is the drive-through. The proposed drive-through window is three feet closer to the adjacent residential property than is typically allowed. Generally, we require 150 feet, this drive-through window would be 147 feet. And the proposed buffer between the parking lot and the adjacent residential properties is four and a half feet narrower than is required, 10 and a half feet versus 15 feet. Those requirements are intended to protect adjacent neighboring properties from things like headlights, a little bit related to noise. And we believe that the proposed buffer at 10 and a half feet with a full fence and landscaping can adequately address those issues of headlights and noise. Staff received one phone call about the proposal from a resident concerned with additional traffic traveling south on 16th Avenue. We also heard additional comments about traffic at a neighborhood meeting that staff attended with the developer and the neighborhood. We have our transportation, our city engineer here tonight to give us a couple of options related to, to travel on 16th Avenue. And also, I'll just note that there is a stipulation included in the resolution that requires some sort of channelization or other means to address potential left, or potential issues with left turns out of the development onto 16th. I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff here for a second.
Good evening, commissioners. Yeah, Melissa asked me to, to come and kind of address the, the potential issue of traffic into the neighborhood. I did look at our traffic counts for that area. Today, we don't have any current counts on the, on the block 16th Avenue, south of 66. We have in other parts, on other parts of 16th, and directly north of 66, and in other local residential streets that are very similar in nature to this. So I would guess that, that it is on the, you know, on the higher side of a residential street volume, which would be around 500 to 1,000 cars a day. There are no trip generators south of 66 currently, and so we don't expect that to change. The trip generation would be right on 66 with that, with that entrance and exit directly onto 16th, just south. So we really look at, if you wanted to, to prohibit or, or prevent traffic south of the development on 16th, there's about, you could look at a couple things. Currently, they're just showing a full access onto 16th. The first step, first option, so to speak, would be sort of a directional pork chop-type median at the, at the exit. That would steer exiting vehicles to go north on 16th as they exit the site. I should note also, on the east side of the development is access to Richfield Parkway, and that would allow full movements via the roundabout. So going west or east on 66 could be completed through the roundabout. And the second option for 16th, more drastic option, would likely require the input from the neighborhood, because it would change their driving patterns as well, would be a situation such as we have on Oakland Avenue over by TNT Automotive, where you have the ability to exit the neighborhood on the street, but it's a one-way exit. It's narrowed, so that you can't actually go into the neighborhood on that, pass the development. So those are a couple options that engineering would, would be fine with, if, if it came to that.
Can I ask a question? The first option you gave, is that like, manards? As you can only come in one and you can't turn left down?
Yep, very similar. Now, I mean, it's a, you know, you're trying to direct traffic that way. That's not to say that everybody does that, and I would expect, if I lived south of the development on 16th, you know, and there's no traffic around, I'd probably just swing around. But the idea is those non, you know, those, those, those drivers that are exiting and figuring out which way they wanna go, they really just feel like they only have one direction to go, is that, and you, probably in conjunction with some signage, right turn only, or something like that.
Would we ever discuss eliminating that entrance, exit completely, so that there's only one entrance off the roundabout?
I think the developer can probably better address that, but I would think that that would handicap the development, especially in terms of that drive-through. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that that would work, but that's a question that could be addressed by them.
On the traffic side of that, I think we, we'd be a little hesitant. We're allowing a full access on that Richfield Parkway with the adjacency of the roundabout, that distance. If all of their traffic generation was going through that intersection, it would take a little more examining about if that would be something that would be safe. But, you know, we'd have to look at it.
Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question on the Richfield Parkway side. It shows a trail crossing. Can you just discuss what the treatment would be like for where this driveway crosses the trail? And particularly, this case shows curbs going all the way around, and it having a full ramp down, like a street intersection? Is that the way it would actually be done, or would it be like a driveway?
No, it would be the Three Rivers Park standard and city standard is to continue the sidewalk or trail, in this case, through the driveway. So similar to on the north side of the roundabout, where they've crossed, there's a couple of commercial driveways, and the trail continues at a flat grade through, and you actually have the, the grade of the driveway breaks for the trail. Same thing with this. They just haven't reflected it on their drawings at this time.
Okay, I'm, is it okay if I?
Yes, sorry.
So, yep, I'm gonna continue, and I'm gonna take you through some of the site plans, just so that the audience can look through them as well. And I'm hoping that our AV folks, there we go, thank you. Okay. So this first diagram is showing the site plan. Up here is 66th Street, this is Richfield Parkway. This is the exit that Jeff was just talking about, the full access. And here is the exit onto 16th, that the neighborhood is concerned about the traffic. And so we're talking about the pork chop here, or possibly a bump out here to prohibit those left turns. Just a few more details. Here is that window up here at the top. This is the drive-through window that is three feet closer to the neighborhood than generally allowed by code. And this is the landscape buffer here along the south end. So continuing through some of these here, this is the landscape plan. So this is showing the buffer area here along these residential property lines. Right now, it includes a six-foot wood, wood privacy fence with 100% opacity. That means you're not gonna see at all through it. In addition to that, it's heavily landscaped on either side. The fence right now is shown kind of undulating, so that the neighbors to the south wouldn't have just a view of a straight privacy fence, so there'd be some interest in landscaping added to that. That is something that could certainly be discussed with the, with the neighbors, if they would prefer to just have the fence. Obviously, that, that's fine. From the city's perspective, what we wanna make sure is that we have that 100% opacity, no headlights are coming through to those neighboring properties. These are the breakdowns of the tenant spaces. You can see, um, here's the restaurant space with the patio. This is the drive-through tenant and then there are three smaller tenants. These are the elevations of the building. I'm gonna take us to the color ones, uh, since they show up better on the screens. This is the view from Richfield Parkway, uh, the patio seating at the restaurant, the large sidewalk here near the bus, bus pullout and the, uh, pedestrian connections right from sixty-sixth Street. This is the view, this is the drive-through here. So, this is from the northwest side. Um, again, the sidewalk, the patio is down here at this end. Here's the bu, the bus pullout and the benches. View from the parking lot, uh, again, the restaurant and patio. And from the other side of the parking lot. Okay. So, one other thing that I noticed, um, that had come up that we got a question about was, um, financing for this project. And that isn't, um, as you planning commissioners know, something that we generally talk about at these meetings. We talk about, um, land uses and connections, things like that. But it was, um, indicated that some folks thought tax increment finance was being used or other subsidies. The city was somehow subsidizing that pro, this project and that is not the case. Um, there is no TIF, tax from increment finance that will be used for this project or any other city subsidy. The property that is owned by the HRA has been appraised and would be sold to the developer at the appraised price. Um, and so, I just wanted to make sure that that was out there since we had heard that. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Director Stark to add.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I just want to add a couple of things. I, I was in attendance at the neighborhood meeting last week. Um, I, I think probably about twenty people in attendance. First of all, it was, it was about the perfect way for a neighborhood meeting to happen. It was completely grassroots. It was planned by the neighborhood. Uh, there were cookies and beverages, uh, and I, I believe the host family is here, so I wanted to thank them. It was, it was almost Norman Rockwellian in, in its application. One of the things we talked about was the drive-through and I, you may recall from our discussions with the, um, Dunkin' Donuts on Penn Avenue, that there is, the, the technology of drive-throughs is evolving. Uh, and so, I did talk to the neighbors about, um, impressing upon the developer that they utilize new technologies, one of which, uh, especially if they're gonna have earlier morning kinds of users like a coffee place, is the ambient noise at five-thirty, six, six-thirty in the morning is lower than the ambient noise is at eight o'clock in the morning. And so, you could have your drive-through volume set lower at those earlier hours and still be as effective for the motorists but not impact the, um, neighborhood as much. That's just one example. We would also, you know, suggest that the, um, developer utilize, um, dimmable LED lighting. Uh, we've seen that in other projects, uh, as well where, um, it's much easier to fine-tune it once it's in, um, than, uh, something without the dimmable feature. And then finally, we did hear from at least one neighbor, a desire for an eight-foot fence. Uh, that's not in this application. The, um, code allows a maximum of six feet. No, sorry.
Eight feet is allowed in commercial areas.
So, yeah, the plan is showing six, but, um, it could go up to eight, sorry, to, to meet the neighborhood, um, demand. And I, I do think that the developer is gonna continue their dialogue with the, especially the immediate neighbors about that buffer strip. So, those were my additional comments.
I don't have anything else. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, questions for staff? Anyone? Um, yeah, go ahead.
Um, I just had two questions. One about the height of the lights relative to the fence in the parking lot. Would they be such that they would shine over the fence like into somebody's window?
There is a lighting plan, um, and we did look at the foot candles. The foot candles can exceed, uh, one foot candle at the property line. I don't believe we included the lighting plan in here. Um, but the lighting impacts would, I, we don't anticipate any spillover light onto those neighboring properties. Um, there's certainly, you know, there are shields that can be installed, things like that if there were, but at least the proposed plan with the photometric plan shows no spillover light on those properties.
Okay. And then I'm also curious how this is in terms of parking spots. I mean, there's not a, not a variance in here, so I assume it was in, within the city range, but is it at the minimum? Is it at the maximum? Where is it relative to the city's standard for parking?
Right. Um, they actually are right at exactly what we calculated them to need. Their, um, initial proposal was too over and so, the city asked, um, that they add the additional landscape island with the shade trees, um, to meet the landscaping requirements. And so, they're exactly what we calculated them to need.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I have some questions for the developer who is here if you can come up. So, as Melissa had mentioned about the, the eight-foot fence instead of the six-foot, is that an option for you to continue working with the neighbors to make that an eight-foot fence instead of a six-foot?
Yes, we, we support that.
Okay. And then, um, as far as the entrance and exit, can you just speak a little bit more about that on sixteenth? Pork chop versus eliminating versus?
Yeah, we, we support the pork chop, uh, in that if we, if that restricts, uh, the ability, uh, for traffic to take a left onto sixteenth, uh, that the development would not, uh, add more traffic going southbound. Uh, beyond that, uh, eliminating that side altogether, I think I would have to defer to our, uh, engineer to work with the Public Works Department, uh, to see what type of effects that would have. Our concern, uh, would be that it put too, too much pressure on Richfield Boulevard, uh, for all the traffic to come in and come off that one side. I'd envision, uh, inbound traffic coming into the, the development if they were coming from the west headed towards Cedar, that you would take a right into sixteenth and then a left into the property and then exit out through Richfield Boulevard to the roundabout and then to Cedar. So, if we eliminated that access point, um, we, we, we just have some concerns on what, what that would mean on the other side of the site.
Would there be a sign then that would say no left turn?
I believe a sign and, and the pork chop, uh, you know, guiding that right-hand turn.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
I just had one question for Engineer Pearson. Uh, the likelihood, I mean, you mentioned earlier that there really isn't a traffic source to the south on sixteenth other than the neighborhood.
Right.
So, the likelihood that there's going to be heavy traffic just from your knowledge from a behavior perspective?
Um, I would say low. Um, I, I've heard the concern of the neighborhood is that, um, people, if you were, if you're going out the sixteenth side and you wanted to go westbound on sixty-six, that, that there, there may be drivers who, who decided it's easier to go over to Bloomington Avenue. Go via south sixteenth, sixty-seventh over to Bloomington and then use a stoplight. Um, in our experience, I mean, and I, I'm not saying that might not be the case, um, if it was a full access on that sixteenth side. Now, I, I have a fair amount of experience with roundabouts, so I understand how they operate. It would be much simpler if that was, if your concern was getting out to the west, it would be easier to just take a right and go around the roundabout. Now, there may be, you know, customers who are not familiar with roundabouts and they decide they wanna weave through the neighborhood to get to the light, but I, I don't feel like it would be a, a huge issue, but if it's as simple as adding a pork chop to prohibit that left, uh, or discourage that left, um, you know, that's, that's one way of, of addressing it.
Cause wouldn't most traffic naturally go north, making the right-hand turn? And if it was busy on sixty-six, it would actually be a backup of traffic trying to potentially get out.
To take that left on sixty-six, yeah.
Well, or right or left, I guess, but.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? No? All right, we will open the public hearing then. So, if anybody would like to come up and speak, um, come on up, sign in. Um, usually we give about three minutes, um, but if there's a group of you, you can speak for the group as well and have a longer time. Okay, thank you. Just hit your name and address and sign in.
Hi, my name is Dan Heinrich. I live at sixty-six thirty-eight sixteenth Avenue South. The two primary concerns that, that I'm most concerned about are, one is the traffic. You talk about not a lot of traffic there. We've noticed a big change since the dead end was put in at seventeenth. And then my question to you would be what happens when you develop that east side of seventeenth? Is there gonna be more traffic coming onto seventeenth and being they can't go north, circle around and go up sixteenth? And then with regards to coming out of that new retail development, there is a strong chance of backup because a lot of times we don't even go left on sixteenth because it's damn near impossible to do it because of traffic. And then if I'm not mistaken, when you redevelop sixteen, that's gonna, is that gonna be two lanes there with bike lanes on each side? Yeah.
Um, well, addressing that one, that, no, that, that last block from sixteenth to, um.
So, they can get into the roundabout, you'll keep it two lanes?
Oh, yeah, it'll expand out to two lanes going to the roundabout.
But I still envision backing up if, when they come out of the retail development, trying to take a left onto sixteenth. It's very challenging most days, especially at rush hour, mornings and evenings. Ideally, I'd like to see sixteen closed off. There's only gonna be five houses between sixty-seventh, what remains of sixty-seventh to sixty-sixth. Now, Public Works may, may not agree with that. The one-way out does help prevent traffic from coming down our street, but again, the one-way out, you're still funneling them into a pretty difficult chore to get onto sixty-sixth Street.
Right. And, and we did discuss that. We did discuss the possibility of closing it off completely. Um, our, our two biggest concerns were, um, were maintenance. Uh, I know that seventeenth is closed off, but it's not, it's not an easy street to maintain, especially plowing with the dead end. Um, but all the, other than that, uh, emergency vehicles, um, like to have access, especially with the way that their streets are configured at seventeenth and the parkway. Um, you know, if you keep pushing their access further west, it is just, uh, harder for them to get into the neighborhood. So, by making it, um, you know, the, the most extreme, I'll, I'll call it, um, one would be a one-way out, emergency vehicles can still kinda go the wrong way, so to speak, to get into the neighborhood.
Sure. Then I guess the other concern would be just the light and noise for the people most adjacent to that property. Um, are you requesting the developer to do any sound studies to ensure that they're gonna meet the MPCA rules? Because if they get in there and we have complaints, it's almost impossible to resolve once you're there. Have you asked them to generate any studies on that with a sound consultant?
Staff, do you know anything?
We have not. Um, what, the city has noise ordinances in place.
Does MPCA have seventy-three hundred?
Right, right. We have not, um, I guess we've never had an experience with a drive-through exceeding those standards, um, but we can certainly look into, we can certainly look into that and prior to installation.
Yeah, I would recommend getting it right before you put it in because it's very challenging to resolve. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Next.
Jane Peterson and I live at sixty-six thirty-eight sixteenth Avenue South.
Yeah, and then if you could just speak into the microphone so people watching online can hear you too.
Um, we live across from Dan and there's only five houses on each side. We have a beautiful tree and we park our chairs out there when the weather's decent and the traffic is incredible. They run the stoplights. We get people whipping around from seventeenth, have people coming down six, seventh, avoiding the light on Bloomington. We have a neat little culture in our neighborhood. We have forty, we've been there forty years, um, many old tenants and we have lovely young couple here now too. And the culture of the neighborhood's gonna change. We get that. But we wanna protect ourselves. Now, we have grandkids now and we like to go out to Target. You can't. My neighbor and I talk about, we can't walk from Target, go through a roundabout, you know, with little kids in strollers. It's scary. It really is. Has anybody thought of a way to maybe help our neighborhood, which will be very isolated, to be able to cross over? Now, you've got the north side and we're gonna have a south side and it's very difficult to get in between. And the traffic, that's our biggest thing. I know that come a different time of the day and you'll sit there and think, oh, what are these people talking about? Come at four o'clock in the afternoon and sit out in your front yard and it's, it's been increased dramatically. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Hi, my name is Risa Paul. I'm at sixty-six forty-five sixteen Avenue South. I'm right on the corner at the end. I'm concerned as well about traffic. I, I honestly don't see how it's going to work, um, with the narrowing of sixty-six. Um, like, like Jane said, sixteenth is really bad right now. It actually backs up. People blow the stop sign. I did notice that when the ramp for, by diagonal, uh, when Cedar Avenue was closed, um, our traffic was, was less. What people do is they get frustrated with sixty-six. They zoom down sixteenth to sixty-eighth and then there's a straight shot to Cedar. So, this is gonna make it much worse. Um, then there's also the new development going into the east and that's gonna add, I don't know how many apartments, um, a park, I heard, and that's just gonna add more, more traffic. And, um, it's concerning as, I'd, I'd prefer a dead end to sixteen. That was the best way to go. Out of all the solutions everybody has said, I don't see them working. Thank.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, my name is Rosalie Heinrich and I live at sixty-six thirty-eight sixteen and I've lived there since June of nineteen eighty-five. Uh, my husband and I did host the little meeting at our home with Cookies and Juice. Um, and thank you for everyone that attended. I really appreciated your input. Um, that was awesome. Um, my concern, as with everyone else, is obviously the traffic. I, I didn't wanna come up here and speak the same thing that everyone else is speaking. We should all have something else to talk about, but that is the problem. It is the traffic. We have a dentist office that already encompasses the end of our block. It is on the west side of sixteenth Avenue. Now, you'd like to put another multi-complex development on the east side of sixteenth Avenue with a drive-through. I envision that drive-through backing up onto sixteenth Avenue and coming down towards my neighborhood, my block, my people, um, as the dental office already does. There could be a full parking lot in the dentist office and then there's nowhere else for anyone to park. There are days where there are eleven, twelve, thirteen cars. I've taken pictures of them. I have them on my phone. They are lining the street to park for the dentist office. It's growing. It's great. We love him. He's a great neighbor, but it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger and he's outgrown his parking lot, so they're parking on the street. Now, you're gonna add a complex, a development that nobody really knows how much traffic that's gonna be because there's nothing else really like that in Richfield. Um, they keep referencing the Twin Cities, the TCF Bank and that that's a drive-through. It's a drive-through in a huge parking lot, in a huge development area. There is no homes over there. You've taken them all out. It's all, it's all development area. This is still a little neighborhood and we're losing our homes. Now, we're down to ten total on our block. I am gonna vote for a dead end. I don't want more traffic coming down my street, whether it's coming off of sixty-sixth Street and coming down sixteen or if it's from a neighboring seventy-eight, seventy-six, seventy-fifth, seventy-fourth, sixty-eighth. It's so much easier to come down and come down sixteenth Avenue if the entrance is gonna be right there on sixteenth Avenue. Why would you go around the block, get on Bloomington and come in from the other side? Seventeenth Avenue is closed. We've got their traffic already. You're gonna add more apartments and other things to the east side of seventeenth Avenue? That traffic has nowhere to go. It's gonna come down sixteenth Avenue. That traffic has nowhere to go. It's going to come down Sixteenth Avenue. I know the developer doesn't want to hear that. I know you don't want to hear that. Come sit on my block. I'll give you some lemonade. We can enjoy an evening outside. You can watch the traffic. It's, it's really going to become, I think, a detriment to our neighborhood. I see a dead end as the only option. Thank you.
Um, my name is Larry Nelson. I live at sixty-six thirty-three Sixteenth Avenue. Um, I am opposed to the whole development. Uh, for many of the same reasons that you've already heard, uh, this evening, uh, increased traffic. Despite the much appreciated efforts of the city and the developer to come up with a reasonable plan to alleviate the traffic, there's no way around it. I was driving, um, east, uh, westbound on, uh, Sixty-sixth today at three o'clock, uh, in the afternoon, and the traffic around the roundabout on Sixty-sixth was already backed up. And that's, the traffic was right across, right in front of where this development's going to be. Uh, so, and that traffic is going to spill over onto the residential streets. There are going to be people trying to drive around residential streets to get around the backup on Sixty-sixth Street. I mean, there's no plan that I can imagine. Um, I know, uh, that he's going to tell us that it's going to be fine. The developer's going to tell us it's going to be fine, but it's not. It's going to be disruptive to the neighborhood. Um, you also heard and will hear that this has been zoned for commercial property since nineteen sixty-eight. Um, to me, it's not commercial property. It's my neighborhood. Um, you know, yeah, this is going to disrupt the neighborhood. Uh, it's not going to improve it. It's not going to make the neighborhood better. It's not going to make the city better. Uh, consistently, what I hear from people, when they say why they like being in Richfield, for the most part, it's because of their neighbors in their community. It's not because of the commercial development at the end of the street.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Hi, my name is Liz Barris. I live at sixty-seven thirty-two Seventeenth Avenue. So I live, um, just south of this. And I can contest, I'm actually not on Sixteenth, but I drive all the time because I get on to Sixty-sixth to work. And I see people running not only the stop sign on Sixty-sixth, but on Sixteenth and Sixty-seven all the time. Um, numerous, um, close calls. Um, I'm not opposed to the, the development per se, but I'm just questioning the challenging of the drive-through itself because that seems to be the actual component that's causing that need of that exit. Um, what, why can't we do a pork chop on Sixty-sixth? Um, if that, because it seems like that drive-through is encompassing that whole west side and causing all the development to go onto the east side. Um, also, I, I wasn't part of the community meetings and I agree that the eight-foot probably would help being that the drive-through looks like it wraps around and then, um, basically is facing the neighborhood as they receive their components. Um, but I'm also challenging you guys to think about a big eight-foot wall as we look. I'm up at four, four-thirty walking my dogs every, um, day, and I walk that area, and that's the only time that there's peace and I can actually get across to Taft Park. It's not only getting to Target, but it's enjoying the park amenities that are north of us. And I feel that having an eight-foot wall there is a really kind of a, you see in the back end of it and kind of a barricade. And I know we can omni-late it, um, but I'm wondering if there's something else that we can do. And then, again, I'm up at that time. That's when the drive-through is going. I know you suggested a new technology, LED, um, ambient noise, but how can we actually get that enforced and actually utilized? Um, and in, you know, making sure that that's addressed accordingly.
Thank you. Um, I do have a question about the fence. It would be landscaped, correct? It would not just be...
But that's on the inside.
Both sides.
Right, right now, the fence is shown. Um, I'll go back to the landscape plan here.
Thank you.
Because, sorry, I just want to add one too, is the fact that we're also, we have the ordinance to be, you know, the certain distance, the fifty feet and then the one-fifteen. I guess, being that it's a drive-through, I think as neighbors, we really want those ordinances to be enforced.
Okay, so the landscape plan is pulled up here. This, um, this dark line here is showing the fence. And, um, like I mentioned, it's, it's shifting back and forth, um, closer to the neighbor, farther from the neighbor, uh, so that you can put landscaping on either side of that so that it is not just a big six or eight-foot wall that that neighbor is looking at so that it's attractively landscaped. So you're alternating between having landscaping fence, fence landscaping, landscaping fence. Um, because, because I completely agree. Just a solid, um, privacy fence is not attractive for anyone. Um, and so we did recommend to the developer that they try to shift it this way. Um, again, that's a discussion that, um, can continue to happen with those immediate neighbors to the south and what they would prefer, but this was what, uh, we thought would be a more attractive option to still, uh, meet those opacity requirements.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else who'd like to come up and speak?
Hi, I'm Bill Killian. You guys got really nice digs now, I got to tell you. Compared to what we had two years ago. Um, I'm at sixty-six twenty-seventeenth Avenue. I'm, uh, the adjacent property for the development. And the one that... The most affected with the in and out on the, uh, the, uh, Richfield Parkway. And that, and so I thought I would let you know a few, one, one of the things is, is that I am... I moved into my house in nineteen sixty-eight, and that became the first property. I always knew that it would happen. I didn't know that it would take thirty-nine years. When I look at what this could have been and, and that, uh, this is much nicer than what other alternatives, uh, may have come up. Uh, or could come up. So, the thing is, is that, um, the main issues that I have is a six-foot fence is a no-go. I went out and I looked from my, from where the parking lot would be. My deck is elevated a little ways off the ground because of the way that it's landscaped. And everybody's just going to watch me on my deck and however I want to be. They may not appreciate that. So, um, the thing is, is that an eight-foot fence, which right now there is a garage next door to me and the eve height of the garage, uh, when I'm out in the, uh, in that yard, uh, eve height of the garage would be acceptable for me to have, uh, blockage so that I have some privacy in that. So, um, the other thing is, is in talking to the developer, one of the things that he mentioned was, um, there is a Gabion style. Am I pronouncing it correct? And I did go over to Surly, and, but then I went on the internet and, uh, you can look and you can just put Gabion fence in. And I got to tell you that these are rock fences that are in wire, and they can be extraordinarily attractive, and it can help both his property and my property if you go through and you try to do something right. And I'm not sure that they're real expensive either. So, um, the thing is, is that, um, because it would be eight-foot and that, it needs to be something that's going to be quite attractive. And the, uh, the developer had said at our neighborhood meeting that, uh, this would be an effort between his architect and the neighbors to make sure that, uh, that we got something we could both live with. Uh, the other thing is, is that, uh, a fence of that, um, uh, of that thickness and that, because these things aren't just a wood fence that can sit there and vibrate and that from traffic. This is a solid fence, and so it's almost like a wall by a freeway or something like that where we put walls along freeways to keep noise and other stuff out. And this would be, I think, would, would really help, uh, maintain the value of my property. The, the other thing that, a couple of things, um, I know that people are saying that people can't get through the roundabout walking, but I got to tell you that I've got a constant stream of people, including, uh, my, uh, my sister-in-law's grandson, they go over there a couple of times a week. And that, but we have a regular, uh, a pathway down through here. And so I'm a little curious, having, trying to have a fence which is going to block the street and, and that, um, we need to be able to think about the pedestrian traffic that's going to be on Seventeenth Avenue and how that will be able to get to the sidewalk. So we have to maybe do a little bit of work there. Um, I am also concerned about the parking. We've had this before in town, you know, Susan, that we go through and, and there's spillover and we've done certain things. One of the things that I've always thought about is, is that we've got Mount Calvary parking lot is empty all day except on Sunday, and I don't know why we don't have businesses make arrangements to, uh, park in their lot or something and, uh, plow their snow for the privilege or something. I don't know. But it seems to me that there are ways to work this out that we can get, we can get vehicles off of the streets, out of the neighborhoods and that, by just by having people, businesses and that kind of working together a little bit. So, um, I guess, I guess my thing is, is that, um, I'm sure the neighbors that, whose houses are, are being taken and that. I also have a little bit of a feeling for them also because they've been sitting here going through for a long time. And we have people that go through and are looking for closure on something. Uh, and, and I think this is a reasonable development that I'm right next door to and that I'm willing to live with as long as there's a few concessions made.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Anybody else? Yes, please come up.
Hi, um, I'm Courtney Zalmer. I live at sixty-six two-one Sixteenth Avenue South. I am also in the other adjacent property to the development. Um, and my biggest concerns, I guess, just to reiterate what they said, uh, is the neighborhood. So the traffic, especially just with, uh, the pedestrians. So we have the bus stop at the end of the block and then walking the dog. We're all in the street. And then we're going to have the extra, so I guess that's my biggest concern is just the safety when we're walking throughout our neighborhood as the kids walk down the street to get to the bus. Um, and then as far as the wall goes, um, appreciate you're willing to work with us on the wall. Um, I think that having a taller wall is important. Um, my neighbors currently, who their house will be taken, they knew I had a cat. And we have a five and a half, six-ish fence between us, but they knew I had a cat because they could see it in my guest bedroom window. Um, so just that privacy in our bedrooms that will directly face the development would be much appreciated. As we want to have a family and have kids eventually move into that second bedroom. So, that is my biggest concern in addition to the sound and the lighting. Um, and just making sure that they are upheld, keeping the promises on making sure the light can come over into our bedroom windows um, on a constant basis, especially in the late hours of the night. And then having that sound in the morning, um, we wake up to every morning and nice summer nights when you want to have your windows open. Just think, so it would be nice if we could get that, um, the ambient speakers that they were talking about so that we wouldn't have as much sound streaming into our windows. But other than that, I think a lot of our points have been that I just wanted to make sure we get it.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Anyone else? We'll get a line.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Kim Hooly. I live at seven thousand one fifteenth Avenue South. I'm here supporting my neighbors in the east side of Richfield. So I drive Sixty-sixth Street at least three times, four times a day. And I can probably tell you every single time I get to the intersection of Bloomington and Sixty-sixth, trying to turn left to go south on Bloomington is nearly impossible. I can only imagine what it would become if we had traffic entering onto Sixty-sixth Street from Sixteenth Avenue. Currently, if I'm leaving Cedar Point Development and I'm heading home, trying to get to Bloomington Avenue and go left, usually I'm turning on Sixteenth Avenue and I'm going down Sixteenth Avenue to cut over to get to Bloomington. I'm guilty. I am, you know, there is not a dedicated turn lane on Sixty-sixth currently, and it's just going to become increasingly more difficult for residents to get to where they need to be. Richfield is making an effort to stop being a pass-through city. Why are we encouraging drive-throughs? We need to consider the fact there is a school across the street. There is a dental office. There is a daycare center on Sixty-sixth and six, uh, Bloomington. There is just so much pedestrian traffic that we need to really think about what we're inviting into our neighborhoods. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Next.
All right, I'm, uh, I'm Tyler Hoyt, and I'm Courtney's fiance. I live on sixty-six twenty-one Sixteenth Avenue South. Um, obviously, this is intimidating, being so close to us. Um, and like, I know you've heard it a hundred times already tonight, but concern is sound, privacy, um, value of the house, which Bill had talked about with the, uh, aesthetically looking wall. Like, I think the wall's important because I know our bedroom right now, I can hear a conversation of our neighbors. It is that, and, and I realize it's a hundred and forty-seven feet to the, to the drive-through, but I'm just, I'm just concerned about, I'm concerned about the sound. I'm concerned about the light, which the developer did, reached out, said they're willing to work with us. So I mean, I don't know how far my voice goes, but I'm, obviously, being that close, I'm against it. But if it is something that happens, I just want to be, you know, in the loop with this wall. Eight feet is important. I think the, to making it look good. Um, obviously, the, the parking, I don't want, I don't want car, there's already like, it had been mentioned with the dental office, there's cars that are being parked down the street. I don't, I don't want more cars parked in front of our house and... Um, yeah, I'm just, I'm concerned about just home value being that close, the sound and the privacy of it all. And it, I mean, it's hard for me to picture just because I've, this is my first house that I've bought, so I don't, I don't know what it's going to look like. Um, so it's easy to be intimidated by all of this. And I guess that's, that's what I just wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Anyone else guess?
Good evening again. I'm Lonnie Proventure with Interstate Development. We're the developer for the project. Um, I was, uh, blessed tonight to have our engineer and architect, uh, with me, and we, um, have a potential idea as it relates to the traffic on Sixteenth. Melissa, do you happen to have the site plan? It's sheet, uh, C three oh one.
If our AV folks could pull that up. There you go, Lonnie.
Uh, is that, the other one that shows the parking stall?
Yep, there on there. You just, we'll zoom in a little bit for you.
That works. So, we would be, uh, acceptable to closing off, uh, Sixteenth, of course, uh, pending the city attorney, uh, in his review. But closing off Sixteenth at our southwest property boundary, um, this closure would grant, uh, access to both our property and the adjacent, uh, dentist on the west side of Sixteenth. Uh, continuation of access from Sixty-sixth Street. But that closure, uh, would prevent any through-traffic from going south beyond the two commercial properties to the resident.
Lonnie, do you have a diagram? Did the engineer scribble something?
Yes.
We have a dot cam. Okay, that would probably be more helpful.
Scribble might be an overstatement. So... So what we're looking at is right here. You know, so we have to be multidirectional. This is the dentist. These would be the two key points of ingress and egress. And 66th would be right here. This closure would prevent any through traffic for the residents because we are both understanding and sympathetic of their concerns. This would also allow us to expand the wall. Details and the specifications of that wall can be further discussed with staff, whether it's six feet or eight feet. And the construction materials, we're, we're open to suggestions. An extension of that wall in that area would, I think, further help alleviate noise issues as well as potential light pollution issues. And other of the symptoms of commercial development.
Thank you for coming.
I have a question. Does the dentist office, where does that parcel boundary actually end? Does it line up with that driveway exit?
It does not. Their boundary is north of ours. So the next residential driveway would be just about, I don't have it on this plan, but it'd be about 50 feet to the south of this.
So if you were to extend a closure straight off the bottom edge of that driveway, the south end of that driveway?
I don't, we don't have an aircanario to show that, but there would be no residential access point to the north. And there would be no commercial access points to the south. So this hypothetical closure or wall would bifurcate commercial uses on the north side of the wall and residential on the south side.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Sean.
I appreciate your creativity in trying to accommodate the residents' concerns, but it seems a little presumptuous to say you want to put a wall across a public street.
Yeah, and I don't mean to say I want to. Rather, I would say we would, we would be, we're amenable to it. But I, I would not say I want.
Thank you. Not right now.
Thank you.
This is still a public hearing, so if anybody else would like to come up and speak? Yes, thank you.
I'm David Burkota, 6614-17. Start off by saying, what, six years since 17th was dead-ended? Still get about a dozen, excuse me, still get about a dozen cars all the way to the end. Someone over here mentioned not wanting to close off 16th. If the dentist office is out of parking and traffic concerns, why don't we just close it, turn the whole thing into a parking spot?
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Terry Straub. I live at 75th in Portland, so I'm really not involved in this other than the fact that it's another case of four more Richfield residents being evicted from their home. Couldn't this development be in the crossroads or in the commons area where those people have already left their homes? Do we need to evict more residents so we can have another coffee shop? I think it's the whole thing that Richfield is continually to do, the whole east side of Richfield. If you live there or work there, Richfield wants to get new residents, new things going on, you people can't live there. And this is just another case of that. And I don't care how you do it, all the expansion that you're talking about doing, traffic is going to be worse. And we're narrowing 66 feet. To me, it doesn't really make a lot of sense. Got to be some other way to do this. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Anyone else? Anybody? Are you sure? All right. We'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm moved.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's do some discussion before we have a motion. So we don't usually deal with closing streets as a planning commission? What is the process for that?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I, I think I expressed before I, I would have some concerns with it. I'm not really willing to say one way or another that we can or cannot do it tonight. I think there's some discussions that need to be had with public safety, fire, maintenance. I think there's ways that could be done that could alleviate if they have concerns. But again, it's, it needs some further discussion with those departments before we can say one way or another.
Am I correct that we have one more planning commission meeting before the timeline? June 10th, I believe, was the date?
Are you asking if we could table this?
Yes, in a roundabout way.
We would have to extend the deadline, which we are allowed to do. One time, we can extend by 60 days because this item needs two readings at the council. So not only do we have to fit the planning commission meeting in, we have to fit two meetings of the council. So we have, if we table this tonight, we have three meetings and that's two more months.
My kind of thoughts on tabling is it seems like there was a lot of proposals, a lot of ideas between the developer and the community and and the city and a lot of things to discuss about possibly closing the street that can't be decided necessarily tonight. So that's my thinking of tabling it and getting all that together before we come back on a vote. Does anybody have any thoughts or a motion to approve it tonight, not approve it tonight?
I would not support approving it tonight the way that it currently is. Sounds like there's a lot of concerns about the traffic and the traffic is already a safety issue there for pedestrians and cars. So I guess I think, I do think we need to table it and come to a better solution.
I am generally in favor of approving it tonight, but I don't feel strongly about tabling it. I guess it would be nice to see what the options city staff come up with. I guess I generally, so many of the concerns, and they're legitimate, and I'm sure I would feel the same way if I lived on that block. They're not going to change dramatically based on the diverter or the situation. I think people are going to have the same concerns about parking and traffic on 66th and all those other issues. I think the developers had this in the, in the works for a long time and we've also heard all the testimony tonight, so my preference would be to take action on it tonight.
I think I agree with Sean that the, the developer's already gone back and really, you know, moved mountains to make a more appealing, more visually appropriate facility compared to where they started. And, and I don't, I don't think having a meeting a month later is going to change any of the issues. I think the residents' feelings are still going to be the same. There might be alternatives for how we route things, but the, you know, traffic flow and shutting down a street really isn't a planning commission function. You know, the, if, if we match up what the actual look and feel of the whole development is against the standards that we're holding it to, it matches up. I mean, it doesn't mean that it's a result the residents like from a traffic perspective, but you know, the, the developer has done what's required.
Anyone else? And I agree. I don't think that we would change anything about the development, so you're probably right since we don't discuss, you know, closing streets. I just think it would give time for that proposal to happen before we approve. Is there a motion? Yeah.
I, I do just want to add that there, there is a stipulation in the recommended resolution right now that requires some sort of diversion of traffic.
And that could be shutting down or the pork chop or?
Right. It doesn't specify. It says that there needs to be some sort of channelization. And I can find the exact stipulation. And, you know, from staff's perspective, we can absolutely legally continue this. That's no problem. We can do that for you. Alternatively, this is going to go to a first reading of the council, which is a consent item. It's not an item that they discuss. And then two weeks later, the council will have this same discussion. It will not be a public hearing, but they will have this discussion. And in that amount of time, staff will be able to go back and check with public safety, public works, maintenance, all the other folks that need to weigh in on this and talk to the developer a little bit more and have an idea of, okay, these are realistically the options. And then the council can make a final decision based on that.
So the second reading is not part of the consent calendar?
Correct. The second meeting will be discussed at a meeting just like this.
That's good to know.
With the exception of public testimony.
And I'll just add to her comment that if the, if the solution was, was to close the street and all departments agreed to that solution, that it would still go to the, that's not something that we would just do on a staff level. It would have to go to the council to approve something like that. So it's, it's, you know, it would be further on. It's not like we just make a decision.
That makes me feel better knowing that there'd be further review of this and another discussion. Considering we won't change necessarily what the development looks like. And I, I would agree. I think, you know, all the meetings that we had with HRA, the city council, we gave some really strong feedback. And the developer really came back with everything that we had requested and, you know, all those connection points to 66th, so. All right. So is there a motion?
I would move the recommended action.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I did just want to ask one detail. One thing that concerned me when this project first came forward and as both Gordon and the chair have noted, it was, it was, it was kind of bad. I mean, it wasn't, wasn't nearly as nice as what we're seeing tonight and I'm really pleased with what they did. One of my concerns was that the neighborhood is getting all these impacts and yet if they actually want to walk to this coffee shop, it's not very accessible. And that's mostly resolved, but two, two questions I have are there are doors shown from every suite out. Are they required to actually use those doors and make them functional?
Yes, we have talked about the doors. There has been discussion, there might be a center tenant that does not have an access door. Those tenants haven't been discussed. But we have made it very clear to the developer that that coffee shop absolutely needs that access from 66th that the restaurant does. We've actually reconfigured the patio a little bit to make sure that that door is accessible from 66th Street. So yes, those doors will be required to be open and accessible.
Okay. And then one other detail, there is a sidewalk on 16th for the length of this property, which seems helpful, especially if there's more traffic north of that driveway. But there isn't any access from the sidewalk to get to the businesses. And it seems if you were walking from 16th to those businesses, that it would be nice to be able to go through the parking lot instead of walking around. Is it possible to include access like that?
We can certainly look for an option to do that. You know, the, yes, we can certainly look for an option. The easiest place seems like, right, wouldn't work because it's across the drive-through and the, right.
Yeah. Well, I mean, ultimately, and then, yeah, the neighborhood knows how much they may or may want to use this and it sounds like there's already a process and a dialogue there. So I would leave that up to them, but it'd be nice to have that addressed ideally.
Yes, we can look into that, definitely.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve as is and a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you all for coming. We really appreciate it.
So Erin, just to, I'll just clarify for everybody in case it wasn't, in case I was speaking planerese. There will be two more meetings about this. The next meeting is scheduled for two weeks from tonight. That's a consent item with the city council. They generally will not discuss it. It's a, it's kind of a perfunctory need. Two weeks after that, which is June 13th, the council will consider this action and discuss it again. That will be either a final decision or they would table it. That, that would be their option too. But June 13th is likely a final decision on this project. That will be at the council's discretion. It is not a published public hearing. But it depends on the item. Occasionally, they open it up for additional testimony. You can always submit, submit testimony to the council, written testimony.
Thank you. While everyone's here, I am going to do a shout-out for the comp plan. There, there's comp plan and there's a website on the city of Richfield for comp plan coming up. So there's a survey currently out there about what is going to happen in the next 10, 20, 30, 40 years. And the current survey is a map and you can go on there and give some comments about the city. So while everyone is still here, I'm going to give a shout-out for the comp plan.
Yes, we did, there were some flyers distributed at the neighborhood meeting.
There's flyers. Wait. The second, while everyone shuffles out, or you can stay. Okay, our next item on the agenda is consider the attached resolution finding the sale of 6608 17th Avenue and the adjacent remnant parcels by the Housing and Redevelopment Authority for future redevelopment as a commercial property is consistent with the Richfield Comprehensive Plan. Staff.
Thank you. So this is 6608 17th is one of the properties that we just discussed as part of this commercial development. The HRA owns that single-family home as well as the two remnant parcels adjacent to 66th Street. All of these properties are zoned general business, C2, and they're guided for community commercial use in the comprehensive plan. The HRA is proposing to sell this land to interstate partners. And state statute requires that whenever a public agency sells, buys or sells a property, the planning commission must make a finding of consistency with the comprehensive plan. So that's what we're asking you to do tonight. We're asking you to find that the sale of the property to a developer for commercial development is consistent with this general business and community commercial guidance.
Is there questions? This is not a public hearing, so is there a motion?
So moved.
I think it would be silly to not approve this since we just approved the plan. So any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is typically where we do new business?
What's that?
Do we typically do new business?
You know, we've changed the headings.
Yeah.
Because we're matching up with the city council, so there's no longer a new business category.
Right, sounds good. Liaison reports, community services, that's me. So I have like two meetings to catch up on, but they, in the last meeting, talked about the capital improvement plan for the parks and they kind of went through what all that is. A huge chunk is going to the ice arena, so if you don't know, they need to fix the refrigerant to get it kind of up to code. So that's been in the long plan. We all pretty much saw that when we saw the plan as well, so. And then they put a grant in for a crosswalk at Nicolet Avenue and 73rd. I don't know if that's been determined, if they got that grant or not, but haven't heard anything yet. And then they're also working on the Parks Master Plan. I know something that they've been talking a lot about. It's a dog park, which I'm super excited about. And then some smart city components, which I don't know what that means. So I will find out for our next meeting. City Council.
Going to look like, but it's, it's going to look a lot like Portland. And if we can just make it through for two more years, maybe three. But it's really been, I mean, we all, anymore, you stop and you go, how am I going to get there? You know, your usual ways of, because you, so, but it's going to be great. It's going to look good. And it's going to be beautiful, a lot of trees and so I'm just holding my breath for a couple of years.
As someone who lives on 66th Street in the middle of the construction, it's not that bad. It really is not that bad. As someone who lives on 66th Street in the middle of the construction, it's not that bad. It really is not that bad. There's still a road. You can get around.
I live on Thomas, and so we're waiting for the, for everything to jump pen so that we'll be involved with it. But we just, it's, it's really hard.
Alright. HRA?
Yeah, it was discussed at the HRA meeting last week that the Seasons Park development went up for sale. And then after that meeting, it turns out the Seasons Park development was purchased by Aon, which is really great. But there's gonna be a meeting tomorrow here at 5:30 to do a study session on ordinances and things that the city can do to kind of protect tenants and renters. So, that's exciting and people should come.
I had a question. Is there anything the planning commission is involved with those ordinances? Or does that really fall more to the HRA? John knows this.
Well, when I try to imagine what they would be, I, I can't imagine the planning commission having a role. However, you know, I think this is a topic that people in the community are very engaged in. And I have to imagine it will be a recurring theme in the comprehensive plan discussions about, you know, affordable housing and preservation of affordable housing and if there are land use ways of doing that. So, I, I don't think in the immediate it would, but I think in the bigger picture, it could.
Thank you. Richfield School Board?
No report.
Transportation Commission?
No report.
Chamber of Commerce?
Coming up this Wednesday, April 26th, is the Salute to Small Business, which is one of the big chamber events every year. And you can still, there's still time to get onto the website and register.
Thank you. Anything else? I already gave my spiel about the comp plan, so make sure all of you are also going on to the map. They call it a survey, but it's, it's rather confusing that it's a map, right?
Well, I have a question about that too. I mean, I, I consider it a survey. It's asking you questions. What's your favorite thing about Richfield? It's just giving you an opportunity to put it on a map instead of just writing.
Yeah, that's true.
So, this is it. This is the survey. It's the map.
Is there additional surveys in the future?
There may be, yes. And we're gonna be going out and doing some pop-up events. And those questions might be a little bit different, more in survey form because we'll have them on iPads and be out throughout the community. And those surveys that we would be doing there would also be live on the website. But for now, the, the survey is the map.
Thank you.
And if you haven't, if you haven't looked at it, you can link to it through the Richfield Comp Plan website. It's been broadcast on Facebook and Instagram a number of times. And don't forget to turn on the other people's responses. If you just pull up the map and look at it by itself with your responses, you might only have one or two spots noted. But we've had a great response with this. We've had hundreds of hits on this website. If you turn on the layers, there are, there are indicators all over this map. It's really interesting to see what other community members are saying. And you can agree with comments, you can disagree, you can comment on other folks' comments if you hover over them. So, there's a lot of functionality in here. You can read the instructions under the Help section if you missed them in the pop-up box, or you can call us and we will help you through it.
Thank you. And then city planners' reports. Anything else?
No, I did want to say that we had our first committee meeting of the steering committee for the comprehensive plan. It went great. We have an incredibly enthusiastic committee. You know, your friends and neighbors are gonna be out with paper copies of the questions that are here on the maps now and just telling you more about what the comp plan is about, why you should be involved at this level, why this matters. So, watch for those folks and call us with any questions.
Thank you. So, next meeting is May 22nd at 7:00 PM, but try to go tomorrow if you're all interested as well. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.